I think those three original question, they answered either the parents, not the school board, or not the teachers.
All right. To kind of repeat the questions, because a lot of people might have not realized what it is, was this person asked a question believing that kids at Need Rider didn't want the mask or the vaccine mandates were charged against, I guess, by the school district themselves by requiring things.
It's disgusting.
Do you want to do, had anything to answer? Do you believe that wasn't correct?
Take those masks.
They feel they're mistreated, I guess, is what they're saying.
Yeah.
I'm sorry that there are students that felt that way, certainly. I recognize that in a global pandemic, this was new to all schools and we were trying to figure things out. Things were changing rapidly and we were also trying to follow the guidance that was provided to us by the Illinois Department of Public Health, by our school attorneys, and trying to evaluate that information and make decisions based on that. And sometimes it didn't move at the rate in which our families and the community hoped, but it was important to understand all of the information before making a decision.
If I could have everybody screwed about four foot this way, because everybody can't see everybody in their names, I think Amy wanted to add just something quick.
I think the main point that needs to be said is this was after the judge made the ruling and it was after the global pandemic, that there was still masking, there was still people feeling unheard and discriminated against.
Okay, this is a question, looked out of left field to me, but I'm going to ask it because someone in the crowd wanted to know. This is a yes/no question. We don't need any explanation. Will you consider raising taxes on cannabis or legalizing or taxing mushrooms to help with the taxes? How about this, I want to know where you would stand if they did. You can't. It's not like you're going to... All right, I don't know. Somebody asked a question, so I asked it. All right, let's go to the next question. Sorry, I tried. This one says comprehensive sex education, diversity, equity, inclusion, teaching in critical race theory, and democracy schools ideology, as well as abysmally low proficiency in reading and math, are all malignant cancers that have unfortunately infiltrated unified schools, as well as schools across the state and the country. What are your thoughts on this crisis? Do you believe it's a crisis that's facing this in the public education system?
Sure, this crisis, in my own experience with my eighth grader at Parkside Junior High, this crisis exists today in the way that we're trying to separate the parents from having a voice in the way our kids are educated. It's a difficult time, I would say probably, and every generation says this, right? There's a simple thing to say, it's a difficult time to have young people. The onslaught against them, it's YouTube, it's social media, it's the school system where we would hope we could send them and they could just learn things. But it's a time that parents have to be more involved and more engaged than ever before in the history of society.
Yeah, so I mean, I just got up here and said something similar to that, is not undermining parental input and what they, what we as parents decide for our own children.
As a parent, it is difficult enough to try to fight against social media, YouTube, and all of these peers of my kids, things that my 12-year-old comes home and finds out at school and through friends. It's hard enough as a parent to deal with that aspect of it, let alone, I send them to school to learn. Anything outside of, outside of core curriculum is my job. My husband and I, that's our job. Not the school, not peers, not anything else.
Yeah, I'd just say, focus to the reading and math proficiency, we need to do that. It could be easier today because we have less students, less people are having kids, right? So the kids, the student population is going down. Lori Lightfoot in Chicago two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, went to tripping, said, "We have a black Exodus from Chicago, that's why we have empty schools." That's an Illinois access, that's not just a Chicago access. People are leaving because of the property taxes are going up. We are a highly taxed state. Referendum will fail because of that, again. But we need to focus on those core skills and we could use learning to boost that as well.
I don't think any of those things should be taught in the schools at all. The only thing maybe would be a guidance counselor, but that guidance counselor would need to get the parents involved.
That's right.
And then with my speech, you know, my views on basically all that, that last part was basically about the CRT and treating every kid as equal, no matter the race, creed, religion, whatever, it doesn't matter, they should all be held with the same standard.
Thanks, that was a really loaded question. There's a lot of components there. I will say that Critical Race Theory CRT is not taught in K-12 education in Unit 5. It is a college curriculum. I'll also indicate, and I did bring with me today in case anyone would like to see it, comprehensive sex education is not taught district-wide in Unit 5. It's taught through a health course in eighth grade and ninth grade. I have the permission slip with me today. Parents are notified in advance before students go through that set of curriculum. Parents are given the opportunity to review that information, to review the course content, and they always have the option to opt out. All right? So I think the original question, as we've gone through some iterations here, had to do with DEI in our schools. And I think it's important to remember the purpose and the value of DEI is to unite us all. We've talked today about how this campaign is very divisive. And DEI is designed to unite us as a community, to bring us together. Let's remember who DEI helps. It helps our special ed students. It helps our students who are impacted by poverty. It helps our low-income students. Because of the experience my daughter had at Colleen Housse Elementary. Colleen Housse is the house, the school that houses the best program for the district's most severe students in the special ed realm, right? They have the most difficulty controlling their behaviors and moderating that. And the Colleen Housse environment is just so welcoming and so accepting of everyone. And my kids would come home every day and say, "Oh yeah, Johnny had a bad day." Not only did Johnny have a bad day, he threw a major tantrum in the hallway, torn out all of the decorations and all of the class projects, and, you know, had to be escorted out of school, right? But they were totally okay with that. He just had a bad day. And we all have bad days, right? And we all want to be accepted and we all want to be lifted up when we have those bad days. And because of that experience that my daughter had at Colleen Housse Elementary, still today as a freshman, she's considering special education or social work as her career. So that's, that's some of the benefits of DEI.
I'm not going to take too much time because I know we probably have other questions. Just going to throw out two things here, just in terms of what our community looks like. I just know that there are over 40 languages spoken here in Unit 5. I think it really speaks to how much of our rich diversity that we have here in Unit 5, and that really reflects us as a country. And then I also want to say that when I'm, when I'm really thinking about what issues matter, I'm just making sure that I'm leading with love. I'm a big advocate of Christ's love, making sure that I am serving my God in a way that actually addresses everyone's needs, and I'm just a big advocate of that. So that's all I'm really going to say on that.
So I'm going to ask for a little empathy here with my response as it relates to DEI specifically. So I would love to live in a world where we didn't need DEI, but unfortunately, that's not the reality. I mean, I mentioned at my, in my opening that my wife and I were first-generation college graduates, and so it's important to have representation. I have not, I have, with my three kids...
Who is John Gall?
I have not had them come to me and express any concern as it relates to some of these topics we're talking about. All I know is that I would like to walk in a room like this and see more representation, period. And that gets at the heart of DEI. I've been a contributing member of this community since 1996. And part of that is because people recognize that it's important to have people from different backgrounds represented. So I believe this, I would love to have a scenario where we didn't have to address this type of topic, but that's just not my reality.
Who is John Gall?
I just wanted to say, I know there's, and I mentioned lots of components. I'm, my whole career as a school psychologist, I worked with lots and lots of students who struggled with reading and math. By the time they got to the sixth grade at the junior high, if they weren't good readers, it just was devastating to them. And so, yes, getting academic skills, addressing academics is extremely critical, especially coming out of the pandemic and the loss of learning that occurred across the country during that time.
All right, thank you. One thing that District 87 said is we are a very, very diverse population, and I think it is beneficial for there to be multiple perspectives given when discussing lots of different situations. I think that education just benefits everybody just going out into the world.
Brad, you had one thing you wanted to add?
I just got another quick story. I like to tell stories. So I mentioned my daughter, she's in eighth grade at Parkside Junior High. So first year, we have the new implementation of this new sex ed curriculum. So my wife and I were, we were kind of waiting for the communication from the school district to come, because we had a pretty good idea, according to some of the meetings, Jeremy had been pretty vocal about how, how we needed to give the parents the option, right? So when does that option come? So that option showed up. That option showed up, and I don't know what Kelly has in her hand as far as that, that letter, but that option showed up in the form of an email. That email, when we read it, we had every intention of keeping our daughter out of that sex ed program, and we ended up doing that. However, as you read through this, this kind of permission slip that was provided to the parents, it was incredibly slanted. That's what the community needs to understand. This isn't a matter of can you or can't you, it's a matter of constantly leaning on those parents to get them to feel guilty about doing something that they know fundamentally is wrong for their students. That they know that they're lying out there with their morals, with the way that they want to raise their kids. And that's the piece that honestly is a little bit despicable, because it doesn't need to be like that. That letter could have just as easily been something that was, that was nice, that was worded in a way that didn't, didn't make you feel like you were missing out on something for your kid. So, so that was my, that was my little bit of disappointment with that letter.
Okay, thank you, Brad. I will say that I want everybody to understand and realize, not everything everybody says is gospel, and you really do need to do a little more checking in what side you think of. And that's one of the feedbacks I got from our meeting last month with the city councils. I got phone calls saying, "Hey, this and this wasn't true," and that's people you need to check your stories out. You need to find out for yourself what is true and what isn't. Okay, next question is going to be two full but real quick answers. Do you think Unit 5 and District 87 should ever merge, and if so, when?
If so, when? Again, I think it's a challenge in our, in our community. I know transportation is a tough thing for Unit 5 to manage, and it's because of what we call the don't hold, which is District 87. So is it, is it an option, is it something on the table? Absolutely, it needs to be looked at. And it has been looked at historically in our community over and over again. There may be a time where it makes sense.
I'm going to say, I don't know enough about that to make a comment at this point. I don't necessarily know enough, as Molly said, but like Brad said, anything is possible if you look into it and you figure it out.
Yeah, when it came up when it got last time, I did vote yes to that. It would save money in transportation, it would save money in administration costs. But I understand now, maybe, and back then, District 87 was having financial risks. Now that the table's switched, so I wouldn't recommend that we put it on the ballot right away.
That's definitely a thought I had, to try to get the budget under control. I tried to speak with people over at the district, but this is recent, I haven't talked to them yet about that. So in the future, possibly, but it would have some convincing to do with the whole, our history has put us in that direction.
I would say this has been explored in the past, and certainly if our community wants to engage in those conversations again, we would leave it up to the voters to decide.
I would agree. I think if it's good for our students and good for our community, I would certainly support it. I think an important thing to recognize is Unit 5 is already the 14th largest school district in the state of Illinois. So what is, what is capacity and what is the appropriate thing to do for our kids and for our community? So I just, I want to weigh those things as, as we make that decision, what's best for our kids.
Whatever's best serves the community and students, that's really what I care about. So if the community supports it, I'll support it, but I don't have too much of an opinion on that.
Similarly, I will entertain any viable solution, but I believe if, if that were an easy thing to do, we would probably be the best to challenge.
I would certainly consider it, and I did vote for it the last time it came up.
Like they said, I would consider it for the community, what's best for the kids, and in regards to the donut, I'd like to say where the donut is in the ring.
This is, next one's for the Unit 5 candidates. If the tax increase doesn't pass, are you prepared to help, back the superintendent with the cuts?
Absolutely not. We've been very vocal. If the referendum passes, doesn't pass, you vote for us, your kids have programs.
What Brad said. They don't know. I agree, like, there's other ways, there's other options. We don't, we're not cutting kids' programs because that's why they're there, is to be educated, so, no.
Yeah, no cuts, no cuts.
Hard one. With the research that I've done, cuts may need to be, but I don't know the actual numbers. But again, both know.
Could you go ahead and repeat that question?
Yes. Let's see, this one is, if the tax increase does not pass, are you prepared to back the superintendent with cuts?
Yes, it would be absolutely necessary to continue to make cuts, to make a dent in that deficit.
I would say yes. We do have the working cash funds, as some candidates have alluded to, to get us through the next couple of years, but after that, we do not have a balanced budget. We don't have a budget where our revenue and our expenditures are going to match. And so the only way to balance that budget is to cut.
I think when you talk about being fiscally responsible, I think it's about finding fiscally responsible solutions. And until I see a solution that is not the referendum, I don't know what other option there is. I mean, I, I think that it's important that our community come together and come up with different solutions, but we need to really think about what's the most sustainable and smart solution that's going to ensure that these programs will be around when I have kids. And I really want to see these programs be around and our school district thrive when I have kids, and it's really been on my forefront, on my mind as I move forward. I just want to make sure that I'm thinking about my future kids, because that's all that really matters to me. And so I, I do, will the cuts have to be made? I mean, if there's no other financially sustainable solution, I don't see what other choice we have. It's not like I want to do that, but I also think that it's important as a community that we think about what other solutions there are, because I think that we need to really engage as a community and talk about what other solutions there are. If there are, we need to hear about them, because I think everyone's voice really does matter.
So again, I do believe that more revenue is needed. If you look at the numbers on those cuts, it's only a drop in the bucket to balance the budget. And so I'll go back to say what I said earlier, and that is, my K-12 experience was very different than my three kids' K-12 experience. And I really don't believe that this community wants to see an experience in Unit 5 closer to mine. I believe they want to see an experience closer to my three kids. And that's really what we're talking about. You can only, you can only do so much, and I know this is a very tough topic to discuss, but at the end of the day, I want those opportunities for the, for the kids that my kids had. And it's going to take funding to do such things.
Thank you. I'm going to start on this side and work back this way on this question. Actually, I'm going to start this way and work back this way. How much, and if you could keep it to 30 seconds, because we have a lot of questions. How much input do you think parents should have in the curriculum that is taught?
I've always appreciated that schools, especially when it comes to more controversial stuff, my kids' schools have always been very good communicating with us what's coming up and topics and stuff like that, to give us the options for things. But I think parents do need to have a voice in some of the curriculum, and that's why I think the importance of attending school board meetings and working with curriculum directors and them hearing your voice.
Yeah, I would agree. The district has adopted a new reading curriculum, I think it's might be in its third or fourth year, and my understanding is they develop big curriculum groups that come through, sort it down to three, and it should be open for people to come, look through the curriculum, decide which of the three you would choose. So that's my understanding of the process in District 87.
So for me, I've never felt out of control or outside of the driver's seat as it relates to my kids and what they're learning in the classroom. We're, we're very involved parents, and we have not heard a concern from our three kids, and I've never felt like I could not have an adjustment made if I did have a legitimate concern. So that's one thing. The second thing, and this, this may not be popular, but I trust the professionals. When I go to the doctor, I trust the doctor as a professional.
Howard Zinn?
And similarly, I believe we have fantastic teachers and administrators who want to do right by our kids. And so I, I trust them. I have not seen any personal concerns in my three kids, and that's, that's the way I live.
For every hour of Howard Zinn, one hour of Ayn Rand.
So I will say that whatever sets our students up for success as adults is what I'm going to favor. I put the students first, and I also do believe that as a community, our parents should have a voice. In fact, a well-functioning community has parents that speak up for their kids. And I can't emphasize enough that in order for us to be a well-functioning and healthy community, that all voices be heard. So it's also on us as, as potential parents, as myself, and current parents, that we collaborate with everyone at the table, because without the collaboration, we're not seeing all stories. So I, I thank you for that question.
Great. I think parent involvement is essential to student success in a school, and so parental input also weighs into that. We've seen lots of research and lots of studies that show when parents are involved in the day-to-day aspects of the kids' school, that we see an increase in student success. Now, I happen to have two teenagers, so they're pushing me in the rebellion stage. So they're pushing me as far away from their day-to-day lives as they possibly can. But I think the parental involvement is still important. I do know that in Unit 5, that any time that a parent has a concern about a curriculum or a particular assignment, if they don't approve of that in their home values, they can ask for an alternative, and to my knowledge, those alternative assignments have been met. If you're aware of a situation where it hasn't, I want you to let us know, because it's important that we make sure that those values are upheld and respected.
Thanks. I'd like to say ditto to what Amy said, but I will also agree that communities and schools are most impactful when both parents and teachers are involved. And so that's one of the things that makes me most proud of Unit 5, is that we have a lot of engagement with our parents through parent advisory councils that we've talked about, citizens advisory councils, PTOs within our schools, because we do value the input that parents have, and I think that that is a critical component to making our schools successful.
You're going to read the question. Sorry.
How much input do you think parents should have on their child's education?
90%. The teachers should teach math, English, reading, science, history, any ideologies should be left at home. I had something else, but I'm nervous, I'm sorry. I mean after, and I can answer that better for you.
You're doing good. The curriculum is failing, as we've already said, right? So we need to address the curriculum. That's a no-brainer. The curriculum should go through the parents. Probably PTO would be a good place to start, start getting that information in front of them. The other thing we could do, and I think one of the other candidates said this, is that the parents need to be engaged. But sometimes, like when I was knocking on doors, getting signatures, they didn't know how. And so that's the other part of our problem. We got to engage and even train the parents to show them how to solve these math, math problems so they can help their students. We need to train them, because they're not equipped sometimes to do that. So that'd be a great thing to help our core skills go up and having the parents help.
So I do believe that parents should be very involved, that they should be, their opinions should matter because of their kids. I do agree with Alex that, you know, we do, we do trust the professionals. That's what they're trained to do, just like with doctors and stuff. But there are points where, when you go to the doctor and you're telling them what's wrong with you, you know your own body, sometimes better than they do at that point, because you know what you're feeling, you know what's going on. You need to work with them to figure out how to fix it. And just like with our kids, as parents, we live with them on a day-to-day basis. We know all their hangups, their habits, their quirks, their, you know, all the stuff that goes on, the moments where we're holding them because they're crying about something that nobody else will find out. So all of these things, as a parent, we need to work with them to say, "This is what we believe is going to work for our kids. Now how can we work together to implement these things?" Because our kids are all unique.
Yeah, so my short answer is probably one of the single biggest reasons that I'm running, and that's because parents do need to have a seat at the table, and they need to be a driving force in most of those decisions.
So obviously, I know parents need to be, you know, involved 100%, they need to be, need to be completely engaged in everything going on with their students at school. But I think it also opens it up to a bigger question, right? For years, and I think part of what's become a big piece of this budget deficit is, is our school districts have tried to fix society, and I think we failed in that way. If we want to fix society and get people to church, God's the way to fix society. It's not, it's not going to school and rolling the dice and hoping that the person in front of them is going to be positive influence on them, because they may, and many times they're very professional, they're awesome and they're great, and they also may not. And they may not line up with, with the parents' perspective. So again, never more important than now for parents to be completely involved in everything that's going on with their kids.
Thank you, Brad. All right. Whether underground members go into education too. Just because I don't want to forget about them. March 18th at the Holiday Inn, we do have Heritage Foundation coming in, we have a couple speakers. You can find that on our website. If it's something you're interested in, you can RSVP and get tickets for that. We also are going to have our first Pants in Politics on the 17th of this month at Casper's from 5:00 to 7:00. We can continue this conversation there. Think about coming, it's free to come, just RSVP so we know how big of a room to get. Once again, March 17th, or no, I'm sorry, February 17th, 5:00 to 7:00 at Casper's. Okay, the next question's actually for the two incumbents. And it is, you were appointed in 2018, is that correct? Okay. Assuming you were appointed after the budget was approved, you've had to approve four budgets since then, is that correct? All right. The questions are, were you raising the alarm bells when you approved your first budget?
Yes, we have been sharing with the community that we have a structural deficit in the education fund. We've shared that at board meetings prior to even Amy and I being elected in 2018. That had been shared with the public and the community. The boards had made a decision to utilize working cash funds, which is borrowing money, like putting it on a credit card to cover that structural deficit. So, but we had been trying and working to engage with the community, to inform the community that this structural deficit existed and that we needed input into how to solve that.
Yes, I, we have been talking multiple times over the years, at every budget meeting, at every tax levy, at every revisiting the budget, the update to the budget.
tax levy, at every revisiting the budget, the update to the budget, and the end-of-the-year budget, about our structural deficits and the concern for money. Unfortunately, the public doesn't hear that until it impacts you directly, right? It's not just, it doesn't sink in until you see, oh, this really is gonna impact me. And I think the other thing that we've been doing since 2018 is utilizing the working cash bonds, right? Working cash bonds, taking money out on a credit card, right? Paying interest. So you've paid 3.4 million dollars in interest in the taxes that you've already paid to Unit Five, because we've been doing working cash bonds since 2018 to plug the hole in our deficit. So that's why you don't feel that we're in a deficit. That's why you don't feel that twelve million or wherever we're at in terms of with the actual cuts right now. That's why you don't feel it, because we've been taking care of that with the working cash bonds. And those working cash bonds are taxes that you've been paying. So you've been saying, yes, your taxes have been going up, and you're right, because the board approved those working cash bonds. And you've been paying 3.4 million dollars in interest. So the question on the ballot, then, is basically asking you to swap that out, right? Let's swap that out with a tax fund rate increase in the ed fund, so all of that money goes straight to our kids and goes straight to our schools. I'm also gonna say, my dear friend Kelly severely broke her ankle, and the standing is very painful for her.
Thank you, thank you. I am, you know, out of fairness, I am gonna make this comment that someone wanted me to make, and it doesn't require an answer, it's just a comment. The education fund in Unit Five has not been raised in forty years. The education fund can't take from funds for other funds, for example, the building funds. No one is living on income from the nineteen eighties. Yeah, the EAB has gone up. So, but I wanted, you know, on the basis of fairness, I wanted to put that out there. These questions, I'm gonna say... No, I don't, because we have a lot of questions. How about this? On this one, I'm gonna take one, and I want a yes/no instead of any answer, or, you know, a long answer. Do you believe, regarding withholding medical physiology or physiological information from parents, do you believe that should be done? What are your thoughts regarding withholding medical or physiological information from parents, like if they go to a counselor or whatever?
Absolutely not.
Yeah, I don't know the context of the question, but yeah, without the context, I would say not withholding it from parents.
I'm just taking away.
If it has to do with my kids, it better not be withheld.
It's medical, I'd say no, you just gotta get a second opinion at least.
No, parents have all rights, not anybody at the schools.
I'm gonna agree with Molly. It's hard to know without context surrounding that. But yes, these are underage students, parents should be involved.
Yeah, I would agree that, it's hard to understand the context and medical professional, does that define counselor? Does that include, you know, what health? Certainly, we have to abide by laws in that area, but there are exceptions to those laws where parents can be informed of personal information in counseling sessions, but again, I'm not completely...
And I don't know what's hard to read into what somebody's idea their question was, but I believe it is, should the school or the counselor be able to withhold information that they find out about their children? And I can try to read into it, I have things in my mind of why they are asking, but it wasn't what was actually on the paper.
I have not heard of it before, but I always like to learn about new things, so I would need to know more.
Similar to what most of the other candidates stated, I don't know enough about the question, but generally speaking, I would like to know if, what's happening with my kids.
In my experience, counselors, social workers, psychologists regularly communicate with parents when issues come up about their child.
Yes, same thing, working in the office, we've brought parents in many times to work with counselors and social workers and nurses with their students.
I'm gonna stay here and work my way back, and this is a...
One more thing on that, is the fact that unless they're eighteen, they're all underage, so anything that they're gonna be doing in school, if they're meeting with counselors or doing anything like that, they should be going through parental commission anyway. So they're all underage.
Okay. Yeah, but I know my thirteen-year-old can get stuff in her doctor that I can't find out about unless my thirteen-year-old signs for it, so I know there are issues.
That's, that's...
Or twelve-year-old, yeah, they lowered to twelve. All right, this is a yes/no question coming back. Is it a conflict of interest for the teachers' unions to endorse school board candidates?
I'm gonna say I don't know, because if the teacher is in the voting district, then I think that their support would, or not support would...
Is it a conflict of interest for the teachers' unions to endorse the school board candidates?
No, because everybody has the right to hear about who's running to represent.
No, I would like to have the endorsement of everyone, so that would be my goal, because I represent everyone.
Alex, you sold my answer. Yes, I want to represent my whole community, and I will take all endorsements, no matter what. I believe that this is a community issue, and I want to see our community come together on it.
I too represent everyone, and I listen to everyone, and that's why I'm here today, missing my daughter's basketball game. Teachers are vitally important to the education that we provide. I have heard only great things about teachers, and as I go door-to-door, I hear about great experiences that families have in Unit Five. So I want our award-winning, state-winning teachers on my side.
Yeah, it really wasn't, the question wasn't teachers, it was the union.
Well, it is a teachers' union.
Well, I understand. Okay, well, it's two different things in my mind.
To the same points that have been made, yes, I'm happy to be endorsed by any and everyone, would appreciate and love the support. Certainly, I represent all of the community, and although some of the teachers that are in the union might be outside of our voting district, we also have teachers that are in our district that are taxpayers too. And so I represent everyone in the community. A point that Molly made earlier, you know, certainly working within the district, you get a different perspective being inside the schools. And so I do think it's important to understand what's happening inside of our buildings, because it does provide a unique perspective, as well as listening to what's happening in our community. Thank you.
I think it's a conflict, because as a school board member, the kids would be my first priority. Teachers are an important part of that, but the kids are first, and we need to hire the better teachers to help the kids.
Agreed. Students first, parents, teachers. Teachers are reaching out to me, and I'm not endorsed by the teachers' union. I was actually in a, you may have heard, an objection that was written, the teachers' union paid for lawyers to sit on the other side. So they clearly came out of that position before I did. I'm on the union, I have a union family, but the unions, you gotta understand, they are there for their union members. That UFEA contract is not saying they're there for your children. We need to have that buffer, and we need to have parents that are not obligated to vote as a teacher union would want you to vote.
So the teachers' union represents the teachers, the board should represent the students and the community, working along with the teachers. But I am all for, like, if you want to endorse people, that's fine. But when it comes to, when the teachers' union contract comes up, and these board members who are endorsed by them have to sign off on that and have to approve those things, that's a conflict of interest. They've been endorsed by them. So that's where the conflict comes in clearly. So I would say, yeah, it's a conflict of interest.
It should be in the open.
Okay, so let's dive into this a little bit. So the first thing that I'm gonna say, and I need everybody to hear this, is that teachers and the union are not necessarily the same thing. We have had countless conversations with teachers, union member teachers, not ones, ones in the union who don't feel represented. So let's not make this giant lump of being anti-teacher, okay? We need to clarify that. Secondly, I just need to ask all of you, if you were going to review an employment contract for an entity that you took an endorsement from, and I don't know, so I'm not gonna make this accusation, I'm just gonna ask the question, possibly received monetary help from, do you feel like that is a conflict of interest? And I will let you guys decide.
So there's not a lot left to say on that? I mean, here's, so I'm a research guy, right? As I'm diving into this potentially ready for school board, one of the things I wanted to understand is what goes into this. So I go out to the, did you know there's a National Association of School Boards? I mean, obviously, right? So I go out to their website, everybody can look at their website, Google, National Association of School Boards, they'll come right up. There's like eight bullet points that define the role and responsibility of a school board. Not in any of those bullet points has it ever mentioned representing the teachers' union. It doesn't exist. To that point, it doesn't say that we should represent the teachers either. So at a very fundamental level, the board exists to represent the community, the taxpayer members, and the people living in that community, and it's there to represent the students. If it does anything other than that, the system becomes fundamentally broken. All right? We have a school board president that sits up there and decides to cut programs for students, because he thinks it's ridiculous to see in print that maybe teachers need to be cut. That's broken. The community needs to understand how broken that is. That representation has to be steadfast. It has to be for the community and for the students. Thank you.
If you want to segue right, there's two more questions out, the rest of them that I think would need to be asked. Unit Five School Board unanimously opted in to comprehensive sex education, is what this question is. They could have opted out, as seven hundred other schools chose to do. What are your thoughts on this?
So I think we've covered this a little bit. Again, my personal belief from my family was we opted my daughter out of it. I was incredibly disappointed with the slant in wording of the letter, the permission slip that we received in order to get that accomplished. So, yeah, covered it.
Yeah, agreed. I think we touched on this a little bit, and to Brad's point, I think it would be beneficial to, like with the permission slip, not make families feel bullied into making like one decision or the other. So if we're going to opt in at a board level and then allow parents to opt out individually, let's make that easier and maybe not so kind of bully-ish, so.
So the sex ed, everybody should be very aware of what is going to be taught. So I definitely encourage you to go look at what it says it's gonna bring into the school. Opting out is great. I will definitely do that for my kids, because like I said, my twelve-year-old learns enough garbage from everybody else that, you know, hears at school and stuff. The problem is, is, okay, I opt out with my kid, guess what? It won't make a difference, because all the kids talk. They're gonna tell each other what they learned in their sex ed, and you can guarantee that everything they learned is gonna come home and they're gonna tell you what they learned. Doesn't matter what age it is. Oh, my gosh, did you hear what I, you just, what did I learn today? You gotta hear this. It's gonna be there. So whether or not it's opted out, it doesn't make a difference. And I think it's wrong that the school is going to the extent of adopting something that, I mean, the stuff that they're wanting to teach is disgusting, absolutely disgusting. And that is stuff, if you as a parent want to have that conversation with your kid when they're old enough to understand, then that's your choice, but it should not be in the school, ever.
That's well said, Amy. Yeah, I would agree with Amy. I would just also add, you know, it does impact Unit Five when we make decisions like this, because people are leaving the school districts. As I said, our numbers are going down. Homeschooling, private schools, they're going up. There was a private school in town, now considered a high school. I mean, we have to offer education for all students if we want Unit Five to teach everyone.
Amy was literally in my head, because I was gonna talk about how the sex ed program being taught to most kids is gonna be talked about in the hallways, talked about friend groups and all that, so the same information is going through a child into another child, and the middle child is probably altering it from the original thing. So, yeah, I have more to say, I'm sorry. It's my first public thing, so.
I'll continue to say, Unit Five does not use a comprehensive sex education program at the district level. It is taught in eighth grade and ninth grade. I have the permission slip here, I'm happy to share it with anyone who'd like to take a look at it. Parents have the ability to look at the material and to have their child opt out.
In addition to what Kelly said, I picked up today that I have rebellious teenagers, and so my freshman failed to bring the opt-in to the sex ed health curriculum slip home to get it signed. She didn't do it, she didn't have us look at it. The day that sex ed was about to be taught, we got a call from the school that said, hey, do you want your daughter in this or not? So I want, I'm telling you the story so that you know the extent that the district is going to, to make sure that parents have a voice in what their kids hear at school. Now, we all know they're gonna get it from a lot of other places, their phones, social media, and all sorts of things. But if you want it, you have a voice in where it can be taught at school. I apologize if any of that information has come off as bullying, or feeling forced, or if the language that in those, in that communication hasn't been what you wanted. Please send feedback, please send revisions, please send us your critique of that, so that we can make those adjustments, so that communication is welcoming and accepting to everyone, and so that we all feel that we have a voice. I do want to add one more thing to a point earlier when we were going back to teachers. I want to mention that in the first round of cuts that we made last year, we did not fill twenty-eight teacher positions.
Thank you. There is a point of clarification. Yes, parents receive this permission slip via email. I printed it out, so that you may see it if you so choose.
I will say that I respect individual freedom, and I respect the parents' options to obviously opt out. I think it's our choice as parents. I also consider that the idea that, am I going to control what another parent decides? No, I'm just gonna worry about my student. And also, keep in mind that at the end of the day, I think there are improvements that need to be made. If the forms are bullying, I think that's very valid, and I think that we need to improve it. And I think that requires constant feedback. I encourage people to continue to give feedback, so we can improve it. And just consider, you know, really, that can we control what our students are learning? Yes, but, you know, in terms of the outside world, it is scary. And just keep in mind that it is your kids, and you do matter.
So I'd like to add a little bit of a different perspective on this. First, I'll just remind, I shared earlier that for our three kids, we've never had a scenario where they've come home, shared their curriculum, and we've had concerns. So that's just one thing. Secondly, if I assume that parents are always in control of the input to their kids' education, I believe that I am as a parent. But having said that, if I assume that that's not the case, and there's some valid concerns I shared, here's what I definitely know. If given the choice between my kids hearing information outside of a controlled educational environment, i.e. in, you know, in their friend groups or wherever they hang out in, I would much rather take my chances with professionals teaching that type of curriculum than what they hear from their friends and those who don't really have the accurate information. And so I try to anchor back to that, because at the end of the day, I want my children to have accurate information. And I believe they have a better chance of having accurate information inside of the classroom versus outside of the classroom.
I apologize, because I don't know a lot about CSE. I'm not sure where the district is on that. My experience is it was a portion of the curriculum, definitely at the sixth grade level, and probably at some point in the high school. I would defer to Courtney on that, but I apologize, it's something I guess I need to look into.
I don't think District Eighty-Seven is...
I don't think District 87 is opting out.
So with a little bit of research I did this morning, I got a list of library books from my daughter's school, Kingsley. Just with a quick search of gender, two came back for transgender education books. One is called Beyond Magenta and the other one is Being Jazz.
Okay. This question just crossed my mind a little bit, but instead of going to it because we don't have time, this says many schools statewide advance students to the next grade level who are not reading, writing, or doing math at grade level. After 3rd grade, it's probably not likely in this person's opinion that they ever will read at that level. Would you consider a plan to not advance the 3rd graders or older who are not at grade level and basic proficiencies?
So I think this is part of that no student left behind initiative, right? I don't know how much control we have over that as school board members. I think it's more of a national campaign, maybe you guys, the current school board members can speak to this as well. But it is one of the cool things. We're touting a greater, or at least an introductory utilization of some electronic curriculum. And that allows us to meet all of those students where they are. Right now, we pull many high achieving students back into the, you know, into the norm. And we try to prop those, those maybe underachieving students up as best we can. But I can tell you that there's many, many times where students fall, you know, fall between the cracks. So again, not 100% sure how to answer that because I don't know how much control over that type of condition that we have.
You know, what the question really is, is 3rd grader or older, if you're not at level, do you believe there should be some kind of a plan in place that would maybe just not push them through the system? That's what I'm getting from the question.
Okay, so a few places to go with that. One is I know, and maybe they can speak to this more. After COVID, my son was a child that participated an extended school year. So I don't know if that's, was just a COVID-like situation or if that's something that we can look at. I don't, I, again, I would have to know a little bit more, so.
Just my take on the question, thinking about it, is I would hope that the parents would be involved enough or be informed enough that if their kid is falling behind and not meeting level, that maybe the parent and the teacher could work together so that there's not a, oh, your kid's going to fall behind, they're going to stay behind, or they're just going to get pushed forward. Like I think that the parent needs to be able to maybe take up some of that slack that can't be done in school because there's a lot of kids, the teachers are busy. So I think that maybe there should be some parent involvement and do more studying at home, help them out. Like walk alongside the teacher to advance those kids so that they're not, you know, moving into somewhere that they can't or staying behind in that type of situation. So I think parents need to be informed early enough so that they can step in and help out and assist with the teacher.
Yeah, I'd agree. And you know, letting the parents know is a real key part because it gives the parent the ability to help their child. Most wouldn't do that, right? So we can do that by a couple ways. Some of it's e-learning curriculum, have a parent, show them how to pull up some reading, online reading assessments and how to improve their child. When I say e-learning, I don't want people to freak out like, oh, you want to go back to COVID days. E-learning, we all do. I'm in the IT at Country Financial, I'm on the computer all day long. And I read books online, I read technical manuals, I read contracts online. That's something that's part of our culture, we're not getting away from that. But I also meet with teams in person and that's vital. And it would never take away having that interaction with a parent, student. That's very important. So that's all I had to say.
I think it would be something to consider. I think it's a really good idea, but along with Brad, I don't know how possible that is with how the country, I mean nationally, statewide, you got to deal with all those jumps. I think, God, I'll say it again, I'm sorry.
I would say that that doesn't fall under the responsibilities of the, the school board. That's more of the daily operations of the school board. Certainly, we can set the mission and the vision for what we want the district to be in, where we want students to be achieving. But decisions about whether or not to send students through if they're not meeting proficiencies is not decided at the level of the board.
Yeah. The board does set policy about retention, has a current policy about retention. And if you have concerns about your student, how you can go about investigating whether or not they should be retained in the current grade level. There's a lot of factors that go into that. Certainly, if there was a, you know, federal or statewide policy that came down, we'd have to investigate and look at how to implement that. Personally, I think there's, you have to look at all the factors, right? Of why that student is not at grade level. What supports have been in place? What additional supports can be put in place to help that student get to where they need to be? What's happened in their life, right? Has something traumatic happened in their life? Retention comes at a cost, right? You're going to be held back from your peers, so there's a, there's a social implication there as well. So there's a lot of factors that go into that. And ultimately, we need to figure out a way to get each student the services and the support that they need to be successful. I also want to mention, just in general, kudos to everyone who's up here. I know Steve has kind of lost his thought a couple of times. And I just want to recognize that none of this, none of us got into this for the kind of pressure and the scrutiny that, that we're currently under for school board. School boards have certainly become a hot topic and a hot area of interest. But, you know, we're not professional political candidates. We're parents, we're members of the community, just like you. My kids are going over to your house later today, you know? So we all need to live together, we all need to be together, and we all need to be a part of the community together. And so I really commend everyone who's here to investigate and to explore this school board race. But also, as our requests have had, to keep it friendly and kind. Because this is tough. I'm just a mom, right? I'm not a professional politician, so, thank you.
I really don't know too much about it, but I will say that I'm a very honest person. And I think if you ask anyone who knows me more than a couple of weeks, if not a day, I'm a very honest person, so. I don't know a lot about this. I have had, my, my younger sister, just to speak to my personal experience, my younger sister did struggle in 3rd grades, her stay in older back and it was for the best. I, I think that it's important to get the community and especially the parent input very directly. So that's, that's what I'm saying.
Thanks.
So this question actually gives me a little bit of heartburn because as I think about what that issue looks like right now, it makes me even more fearful of what it might look like tomorrow if we don't have adequate resources, if we don't have adequate support for students. Those things do cost money. And so I'm worried personally that if kids are being passed through, what might that look like tomorrow? When numbers are lower and we're just kind of shuffling kids through. So that, that's a personal worry of mine. Because I do think that current state Unified offers a lot of support to students. Some that were new to me when I was volunteering with the Parent Teacher Advisory Council. And so, so that, that's why it causes me a heartburn.
I believe, it's been a while, but when we would consider retention, we would start those meetings early as soon as that even is coming into a consideration. Meeting with the parents and at that point, exactly what you said, much rather develop a plan to address those deficits. Just because of all the factors that go into retention. My years in D-87 retention used to be considered frequently. And the longer I stayed in the district, it was, it was more and more, excuse me, less and less. We were trying to put additional supports, interventions, anything in place to try and address the deficits that the student was presenting.
Yes, Kathy's correct. When I worked with D-87 for 12 years, I did work with retention and stuff, the students with the registrar stuff. And it did decrease over time because more supports were put in place. It was nice, they worked with the regional alternative schools, summer schools, extended school year to work for accommodations to get these students caught up. And if they are, if they do go through, then they still have, you know, plans and interventions in place to continue working with the students to catch them up.
Thank you. Couple things, people want you to look up the National Sex Ed Program that was passed and also House Bill 5188. Become familiar with that. Talk to these people over the next week or two and find out where they stand on those issues and see if they support what you're, what you believe. Because that's important also. Questions about IEPs and support for students, a lot of times legislation will pass these things that you have to do. But, but they don't put funding in for it, so you have to look at that. There is going to be just a question here. This one says for Jada, Frank, Emery, and Worth, but if anybody wants to answer it, we'll let them add on. Can you offer more details about your use of Heartland Now and Imagine Learning platform proposals? Can you speak to the efficiency research of use of Imagine Learning platform on a replacement for instructions? Because of time, can we just have one person take that?
Okay, so out of necessity, we've been researching, what are some options, right? What are the ways that we can, we could add value from day one? And, you know, offer an alternative to the community instead of cutting programs? What can be kind of a win-win-win? Some of the C curriculum stuff very much becomes a win-win-win. Heartland Community, the Heartland College Now program, the ability to give high school students college credit while they're in school. And again, via the Heartland Now electronic curriculum that's available. So it can be done on campus at Normal Community, at Normal West. They could learn algebra, they could learn a whole, a whole slew of whatever's on that curriculum. And get their credit for it in high school. And also get the credit that they would eventually be getting when they go to college. Again, for my son, that meant he went to college, he didn't have to take, at his first college experience because he's already satisfied with his requirements, doesn't have to take a math class, doesn't have to take a science class, doesn't have to take a writing class. It's a big deal. It's a big deal for mom and dad because it's 41 hours of credit that he walks in the door with, right? So that becomes kind of that win-win-win situation. The cost for that is about $400 per student, $400, $500 per student per semester. So there's some opportunity there to save some money. To switch to the Imagine Learning platform, that has a potential, and I talked to the superintendent from the Hartsburg Edmond School District, that has the potential to, to impact kids from 6th, from junior high through, through 12th grade. If we were to pull 15% of the, of the average cost to educate every, every one of these students from 6th through 12th grade, if we were to pull 15% out, it more than fills the $11 million budget deficit we have. Think about that. We can provide them, and, and all that means for any one of these students is maybe taking an elective class. Instead of having elective in front of a teacher, that elective's in the building, that elective is facilitated maybe through this Imagine Learning electronic curriculum. That's the difference. And that's the potential. And the ability that that gives those students to take, have access to curriculum and to classes they would not have had access to otherwise, it's immeasurable. It's the reason a, a, a small school district like Hartsburg Edmond with 63 students in their high school, it's the reason that they're able to graduate students with 20 hours of college credit, they're able to graduate students that have two years of German, they're able to graduate students that have a broad academic perspective that would not have been possible without those types of tools. And as Dennis stated earlier today, guys, those tools are, they exist, we're using them everywhere. They're the same tools that are being utilized for teachers to get certifications nowadays. They're the same tools that are being utilized for teachers to get their masters, their PhD programs. This is the way we learn. We're being pushed in this direction whether we like it or not. We have a teacher shortage. We did hire a few teachers, but we're not, we're not able to attract new teachers to our community currently. If we need a new teacher with some type of specialization, finding them is difficult. And to that point, we have even taken away the ability for some teachers to leave our school district when they had opportunities other places. You've got a question?
I do. I had asked that question. I want you to talk about the efficacy, i.e. the research that supports using it to replace instruction.
Sure.
When I review Imagine's website, it actually says it's great as a supplemental resource.
It does.
There is no support of it replacing direct instruction at the elementary or middle school level. And that's on their own website with their own research that they paid for. I'll be honest, when I look at third-party research, it's even worse outcomes or supplementary fees. So that's where I want to understand.
That is a fair question, and here's what I, in my research, why, why I think your point is spot on. And, and I ran into some of those same points as I was looking through this. This becomes a politically polarizing argument. All right? And it's politically polarizing in the sense that Imagine Learning, what's the other one? Edmentum out of Wisconsin, right? Those companies, their, their goal is to get out, sell their curriculum, right? And they want to do that, and they know the most effective way to do that is to work with, with current school boards and current school administration. So they also understand their large hurdle to doing that is a big teachers' union that doesn't want to replace members, okay? So what we find, and I had this conversation with leadership at Imagine Learning, the data's this, there's, there's a ton of data, and I can speak to this from, from having homeschool experiences with my kids. It's not using Imagine Learning, it's using other online curriculum. But the effectiveness in specific areas, math being one of those, is something that's unsurpassed by having a teacher in front of that student. And it's unsurpassed because the experience is immersive, it's immediate, and that feedback is at the moment that the student's, that it's in front of the student. That can't happen in a teaching environment unless you're in a one-on-one situation with a teacher. Well, the property tax increase to facilitate that, none of us could bear. So the real, the real issue there is why isn't that information more readily?
Look online, there's third-party research that Imagine has been used and is ineffective at direct instruction. And this is not paid for.
There's, there's also a ton of videos and a ton of documentation on imaginary that says, here's how our school district has found a way to success in overcoming hurdles to employ teachers. So, so guys, it's the reality. There's, there's no way to get away from this. We're being pushed in this, in this direction whether we like it or not. The question is how are we going to participate? Is Imagine Learning the answer? I'm not saying it is, for fairness, but I'm saying it's an example of the potential.
It would be a slide.
And, and the scalability of that, the ability to pull a large amount of expense out of our school districts and give kids access to a greater amount of curriculum.
I'm going to put it on info some more.
We don't have the ability to compete with that.
Hey, everybody, thank you. I'm going to, no, no more answers. Thank you for coming. A couple of questions for the crowd that if this piques your interest, you need to talk to these people in the next few weeks. School board question, please tell us your plan to help reduce the layoffs of teachers and staff if that happens to happen. And I think some of this might go back to that. Explain whether switching to Heartland College online courses will increase the ratio of students. Those are just a couple more questions that we wanted to ask. If there's anything else, please reach out to these people. Thank you for your time today. I know things are hard discussions, but I tell you what, I, I think I did the best I could with letting both, everybody tell your story. And, and I appreciate everyone of you for doing this. All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Sir? Is this yours or did I?
Oh my God. Hopefully it's not social workers. Colonel's, uh, no, it's, uh, staff. No, that's not mine. Hey, would you be willing for every hour of Howard Zinn being taught, an hour of Ayn Rand?
One more time?
An hour of Howard Zinn in our school being taught. That's the people's history of American history. It's Marxist-based. It's a counterbalance with an hour of Ayn Rand, an anti-Marxist individualist.
So I don't know enough about either of those pieces?
Well, Google, who is John Galt? It's G-A-L-T, who is John Galt? And they'll give you the philosophies of Ayn Rand.
Go with the second one you, you mentioned.
Well, the first one's Howard Zinn.
He was famous 40 years ago with the people's history of the United States, very Marxist-based. CRT is often, a lot of CRT is based on that. And I would think, in my opinion, I think war should be taught, not strictly. And, so, like I say, since presenting the points of view of Howard Zinn, example, like the Civil War was not really about slavery, it was about economics. And there are right-wingers and left-wingers that have that point of view. I'm not saying it's my point, but I'm just saying Howard Zinn's point of view. Uh, it kind of is in contrary of the idolization of Abraham, Abraham Lincoln and that the, the South is bad, meaning the Southern whites. The Confederacy is evil, and the Norman was good. His present, presentation was basically two economic marks, you know, colliding. Um, and I'm not saying that's not my point of view. But on, what I'm saying is if our teachers are teaching this kind of, um, Marxian-based, uh, views on, on race and all, a lot of other issues, uh, class, um, but another point of view should also have equal time. Ayn Rand, um, it's A-Y-N. She's a, an immigrant from the Soviet Union, very anti-communist, very pro-individualism, very pro-capitalism. She's also an atheist. But her great book, her magnum opus is Atlas Shrugged. And the, the phrase, who is John Galt, is peppered throughout that novel. So anyway, I'm just something that.
I, I'm gonna look into that, but I, I'll, what I'll tell you is.
Oh, no problem. Oh my.
So I'm just gonna say, uh, as I'm heading out, but, uh, I, so, I believe that we, there's definitely an opportunity to, uh, share a, a well-rounded story in the country. What I mean by well-rounded, I mean accurate historical pieces. And how you get there, you know, could be a matter of debate. But again, as I stated earlier, uh, what's currently being taught, there's, you know, there's some gaps, for sure. Uh, but I, I have not, you know, when you talk about the race, I think it's very, very limited term. And so I, you know, you, you were probably the first one to share that example of some pieces that maybe have been, um, up for debate.
Well, what I'm for is balance. And I think the reason why a lot of conservatives are, are mad today, they're worried that, especially like, like the establishment media is so slanted to the left. Entertainment, movies, Netflix. And they feel like, they're like, um, almost like, um, uh, uh, Winston Smith's character in the, in the, in the book, uh, 1984, where it's totalitarianism, and he was like alone in the forest of collectivism. And I just wish that, um, obso-, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I think, and religion too. I hate squashing Christianity, even in public schools. Why not teach Christianity and Islam and Buddhism? Not banning them. I'll, even Shintoism, you know, the Japanese, uh, you know, I'm saying is they should all have equal and taught in a very objective, fair, man. See what I'm saying? Um, you know, um, instead of promoting this idea that you're, this stereotype that you're, you know, white southerner is a bigot and da-da-da. You know, I think the South, even Bill Clinton himself, I thought, made a good comment when he ran for president. Cause he was asked about how's this, you know, deal with all the racism in, in the South and all that, cause you know, he lived in Arkansas. That was the Little Rock High School thing where we sent paratroopers. And his, his response was, you know, in the past 34 years, this is like going back, this is early 90s, so, you know, in the past, like, few decades, I think that the South has made a lot more advances. I think the North is more racist. You know what I'm saying?
My dad, who's 86, he's still alive, he lives in Santa Teresa. Uh, he's from, uh, Forest City, Arkansas. He was born there. So he, it was like, it was during this, you know, he remembers little white lives.
Right.
So he, he tells.
And by the way, the paratroopers went in and integrated. The 101st Airborne, uh, and Eisenhower sent them. So, but, but anyway, I'm just saying, I, I just think there's a lot of, um, labeling and stereotyping of all kinds of people. And I just think that, I just, what I'm hoping for is just to be more, I think we should teach more. My mom was very conservative, and I'm not gonna leave you, you probably go, you know what she did in her classroom in junior high at Chennix? She played an episode of, um, Donahue interviewing Jerry Rubin, a radical. He was one of the coworkers of the, of the Yippee. And she's a right-wing, uh, conservative, and she was playing Jer- Jerry Rubin on, in her classroom. So, things like that can happen.
Good luck. Appreciate it. Thanks for, uh.
All right, talk to you later.